I was saying, I was saying y'all all. Email me on the. It's fine. Yeah. Well, that's what everybody. One thing I will present to y'all. You have a bunch of.
Sarah, Sarah, get some water back there.
I mean, it should be. I bought some.
There's rocks in there. Just, just.
I had bought some.
I'm gonna just get a cup.
Back there looking. I got some water. Did you bring water?
No, that's not a tap.
Oh, that's a tap.
Is there a reason I shouldn't be drinking water here? Listen, I've been watching pets around that thing and I still don't.
We did. We did.
This was the proposed.
One. Three year. Thank you. All about that.
Let's just let him pay more.
Yeah, because of it.
Did you get this? The original bet put in?
I call this meeting to horn. Please just dial off. Silence yourself, hold it for a while. I would love to hear your name. And we will stand within the case of things. Mr. Chairman.
Do you have my father? We thank you for the opportunity to gather today to conduct the business of the great people of Walton County. We first would like to lift up to you the family of Hubert Bell. Mr. Bell was a commissioner probably before most of us even moved to this county. He was a great commissioner and a good friend to Walton County, and we lift him and his family up to you. We also thank you for this joyous Easter season. We thank you for the risen price. We thank you for spring that we know is on the way, and we ask that you protect and guide those that take care of us and protect us every day, both overseas and here at home. For all these many blessings, we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The additions or deletions to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have item two A under administration. It's a request approval of resolution to refund series 2003 bonds. We'd like to pull that for a later meeting.
That's all I have. Or wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's up on the industrial part, but I'd also like to have, under my name, very briefly talking about economic development, probably beyond what's going to be on this presentation here, if I can just have a few minutes at the end.
You want to do your present? Why don't you go say it?
No, I don't, I'm not sure what they're gonna say here, but I've got a different broader thing on economic development I'd like to bring up under my time.
You don't want to do it at the same time these two?
It doesn't specifically pertain to them.
Okay, okay. Motion to pull the.
Second.
Have motion second, all those in favor? I propose motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Have motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Have motion second, all those in favor? I propose motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the RFPs for the construction engineering and space service for the duration of the paved shoulder projects. First one is Genesis.
Can you want them all to stay in the road? Are you wanting to leave? It's a matter of.
You can't require them.
We would like to ask the Atkins and Beverly Ridge if they would like to go outside. We will call you in when we're ready.
Thank you, Hugh. Good morning. Y'all ready? I'm shivering. It's not because I'm nervous, it's because it's so cold here in Florida. On behalf of the Genesis team, we appreciate the opportunity this morning to address the board about the County Road Two project. With our five minutes, I want to touch on two key points that make us the team for this project. Those are experience and communication. With relevance to experience, in addition to the numerous DOT and municipal projects that we've done here in the Panhandle over the last 15 years, that we've worked several of those projects here in Walton County, the team that we've proposed for County Road Two has recently completed County Road 1087 from US 90 north up to County Road 2A. This 1087 project gave us specific experience working in North Walton County. The 1087 project actually ties to the County Road Two project. It intersects at its western limit. We've already taken some of the lessons that we've learned to your road department as they were putting together the contract plans and specifications. Things like the importance of mailboxes to residents and the effects that building shoulders can have on driveway tie-ins, drainage and culverts and that, that sort of items. It's this specific experience working in North Walton County that we bring to the table for County Road Two, and that's gonna ensure that we can identify potential issues on the job before they impact the cost and duration of the construction project. The second item I want to talk about is communication. We know that good communication is critical for the success, excuse me, the success of a project. We focus intently on three main stakeholders in the construction process. Number one is the contractor. We communicate openly and honestly with the contractor in a timely manner. We know that we are your representative, but that shouldn't mean that we're in an adversarial relationship with the contractor. Our goal is to work cooperatively, to get together out in the field to solve problems so that all the parties benefit. We think that if the contractor's successful, the project is gonna be successful, and that approach has proven successful in our past record. We have projects with no claims and no qualified issues related to pay quantities at the end of the job. The second key stakeholder is Walton County. We know that our role is to handle the project, but we also know it's important to keep the officials and the commissioners informed and up to date as to what's going on in the project. One of our primary tools for doing that is our Monday morning status report. Every Monday morning, we email out a report that shows the contract time, the days that we've used, the days that are remaining, and the date that the job is going to end. We also summarize all of the activities that occurred in the previous week, and we tell you what's planned for the upcoming week. To kind of help visualize the construction, we also attach photographs of what's happened, and we put descriptions for the work that's going on and the location that it's occurred. We want to place the county commissioners on the distribution list for this Monday morning status report. That way, you guys can directly answer questions from your constituents without solely having to rely on your staff. The third key stakeholder is our customers. In this case, it's gonna be those folks that live on County Road Two. Our approach for this job is to get out before construction starts, go door to door with a flyer that describes the work that's gonna go on and the phone numbers for the officials that are gonna be handling the project. Thank you. By doing this, we can readily identify any potential issues, any specific concerns that those residents have, and we can be ready for them before the job starts and the contractor gets on the job. It's experience and communication and our approaches to those that we bring to the County Road Two project. We're 100% available for this job, and quite frankly, we need the work. Our office is about 15 minutes from the west end of the job. On behalf of the whole team, myself, Bill Kleppich, Mike Graham, Robin, Sonny, and Hunter, we ask for your positive consideration. I appreciate your attention this morning, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. The 1087 project that we refer to is in District Three, which I'm familiar with, and it came out very, very well, and we got a lot of positive comments about it. Thank you for your efforts on 1087.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is this also in District? Is County Road Two in District?
It splits two districts.
Two and, two and three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Atkins, Atkins. Not here. Not here. Outside, didn't he? Went outside.
Well, they were scheduled, on here it says 9:15. Maybe they. It's Reverend Rich, right?
Reverend Rich, Reverend Rich. 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 Reverend Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today on the County Road Two shoulder paving project. We've assembled a team that we think are the best qualified people in the area that have been doing this type of work for a very long time, and we understand from our previous experience on Paven County Road Two back in 2002 that there's some very difficult situations that are gonna arise during the construction of this project, and we're prepared to address those situations. I want to introduce my team briefly, and then I'll say a couple words about some of those issues that we plan to address. To my right is Claude Cooper. He's gonna be the project administrator, and I'll let Claude tell you a little bit about himself.
My name is Claude Cooper. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm a lifelong resident of northwest Florida. I've got over 32 years of engineering and surveying experience. Seventeen of those years are in FDOT CEI construction management. Seven of those 17 years as a project administrator. I've worked for DOT and DOT CEI consultants. I have a degree from Gulf Coast State College in civil engineering technology, and I'm a licensed professional surveyor in both Alabama and Florida. If we're given the opportunity to serve you, we will do you a good job. Thank you.
This is Chance Powell. Chance, say a few words.
I'm Chance Powell. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm a professional registered engineer in the state of Florida with a degree from Auburn University. I've been living and working right here in Walton County for 14 years. I very much enjoyed that time. Thirteen of those years have been right here with Reverend Rich, working on road construction design projects in Walton County. I very much enjoyed that time, and I appreciate this opportunity for me to continue to do what I enjoy. Thank you.
And this is Diane Hardy. She's the compliance specialist with RS&amp;H that is on our team.
Hello, I'm Diane Hardy. I actually reside in Bonifay. I am employed with Reynolds Smith &amp; Hills and have been for now for 13 years. Prior to that, I was also with DOT in the same capacity. I also am certified through DOT for contract support, which will be invoicing and that type of thing. I've worked also with the compliance and with EEO and on the job as well as in the office, and I appreciate you hearing us this morning.
A few of the challenges that we expect to encounter during this project are in the areas where there's some sharp curves and tough intersections, there's some very dangerous consider, uh, conditions for workers. There are several curves on the project that we expect to extend the maintenance of traffic well beyond the intersection to make sure that we provide protection to all the construction folks that are on the project. Another thing that we encountered during the resurfacing project back in 2002 was two stretches of roadway that had some very plastic type soils, so we expect at least those two areas to present some challenges during the construction for the shoulder paving. The geotechnical report that's been completed does identify some areas, but during the construction, we expect to check and monitor the plastic soils that, that we anticipate in the shoulders during construction. If it's not addressed on the front end, it's very difficult to deal with after the paving's completed. So, we feel like because of our experience back in 2002, our familiarity with the soil conditions, and our familiarity with the traffic conditions on the road, most of the people do way beyond the speed limit in that area. So, because of those, because of those issues, we feel like we know a little bit more about it than anybody else would. So, sticking to my, to my five minutes, I'll go ahead and wrap it up and let you guys ask any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. How long is this section that you'll be doing there?
My understanding is it's a, I didn't measure it with my odometer, but I understand it's approximately eight miles.
Eight miles. And what is the speed limit?
Well, the speed limit varies in a couple different places. The majority of it is 55 miles an hour. There's two small sections near intersections that are 45 miles an hour. The actual speed that is driven is significantly more, I would say.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
They only drive speed in District Two, not District Three.
Yeah. They're, they're in a hurry to get somewhere up there, I can tell you.
They're in a hurry to get to gas. Get the fuel.
Do you have a question? Do you have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. I apologize for not being right there at the door when you called earlier. First, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to present to you this morning. It'd be a pleasure to submit our statement of qualifications and part of our team this morning. I apologize for them all not being here. One had a family illness, and the other two were actually on projects and couldn't get away. I'll introduce us, the ones that I have here, which is key staff for the project. My name is Harry Wood. I'm the associate vice president for North Florida Construction Services. I've been in the transportation business for 36 years, 28 of which were with Florida DOT in District Two. Five of those years was administering the FDOT LAP program for District Two, which is on the east coast of Florida. To my right over here is Ashley Anderson. She has actually worked with me at Atkins for seven years and has been kind of my right hand as the contract support specialist, keeping up with pay estimates, final measured quantities, and tracking shop drawing reports and whatnot. Kevin Cuddy. To my right here, he has worked with, with me off and on for eight years with PBS&amp;J prior to us becoming Atkins. He lives over in the Crestview area and has worked quite a bit on milling and resurfacing and new construction type projects. You all have our copy of our statement of qualifications. I think we've done a really good job going out, reviewing the project, looking at the site. Some of the conditions that we noted were traffic volumes, excessive speed, the majority of the roadway is posted at 55. There are some material issues with plastic materials that would be addressed early on in the project as it starts, not waiting till after it's done. Some, some wet conditions in some of the ditches, side streets. We have the experience, the background to administer these projects. As you can tell by our proposal, our grades throughout the northern part of the state have ranged from a 4.0 to a 4.8 on the DOT's one to five scale. We feel like we bring the best qualified staff to the project. We do have a local office down in Freeport that we would operate out of and have people that live locally here within the community to do the job. With that, I'll turn it over to any questions that you may have. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have one question. What is the, your timing and what would the schedule be on this particular project?
Excuse me, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, my voice is something like that. What would the timing be and schedule on this project? Timing and schedule.
As far as bidding the project and contract time?
Yeah, as far as this, yeah.
Okay, I, I missed the bidding portion. I didn't follow up, look that up. I think the time was 210 days, if my memory serves me correctly.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On these check, on the checklist, if you look at the last.
Last four.
Last four things, starting with the last references of the firm, you know, we, we don't have the package with the references, and firms availability, I'm assuming that that's a given, quality of their submittal, we wouldn't know that because we don't have their submittal. And the recent current projected workload, I'm assuming that that's been checked out by the group that, that reviewed this. And then the last question is, who is the group that reviewed this? Who's the committee that reviewed it?
Commissioner, the ranking was done by a committee of three, I believe, and I think Glenda is in the audience. Can you tell us who those three people were? But they've been rank ordered in all those items. The sheet that you have in front of you is what that committee uses to score them. Because they were so close in scoring on those top three, they've asked the board to take a look at the presentation and make a final decision on this.
Right, of course. I just wondered, I'm sorry, I just wondered, Jim, who was on the committee?
I'm Glenda Johnson, purging. Ryan Douglas, Greg Graham, and Billy McKee, I believe, reviewed these.
I'm sorry, the last person?
Billy McKee.
Billy McKee, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Meadows. I think the last four are beyond our scope to evaluate from, I think, oral presentations we heard this morning. I think we could probably do the first six. I would agree with her assessment that those are probably not within our ability to rank right now.
Is that...
It's done.
Does that agree with everybody?
I'm gonna need a new sheet or scratch through this.
Yes.
Make sure.
Mr. Chairman. We'll modify forms coming to the board in future.
It's a mysterious...
Well, we usually have the, we usually have the information in our office.
Was that yours? Oh, is that yours?
I'm just gonna let Alex add all this.
Anyway, I couldn't tell.
Commissioners, just a reminder, because you're doing this on a piece of paper, make sure you put your name on a piece of paper. It is a public question.
You need a calculator, Alex.
Wait, wait, wait. She's not finished, David.
Nick Stoudamore is the group insurance.
Mr. Chairman, we're asking that, asking that the board allow the staff to go out for our RFQ, much of which is for our health insurance. We've had Blue Cross Blue Shield for the past several years. We were in a three-year contract with them that was quite restrictive, did not allow us to go out for any kind of a new quote on insurance. If we did, we'd lose any money we had accrued in our savings premiums. This last year, we renewed it again. This one is for two years, but it has less restrictive language in it and allows us to go out for requests for quotes to, with other companies, without any kind of penalty. The only penalty would be is if we don't renew with them, and then if we renew with some, if we go with somebody else before the end of the two-year period, we'd again lose that accrued money, but we're not restricted from going out and asking for quotes. And the savings that we've achieved during that three-year contract period were quite significant, and Mr. Purgen has a copy of a check there he would like to make the board aware of.
Myself and Mr. Lamir's met with the representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they presented us a check for one million, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars for the last three years of the savings contributed back to the county, and that's pretty significant savings.
And those savings were achieved by the, they estimate premiums for the year, each year. If the county doesn't use up all of that money, then we get half of that money back through savings. And we do that through our wellness program, trying to get people to get the blood pressure checked, the diabetes checks, things like that. So it's been an effort on the part of the county, it's not just an automatic thing that we get. But we believe it's time that we go out for some quotes and see what else market can produce for us. Would like to go up our RFQ.
Commissioner, what was that number again? That number?
One million, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thanks.
I'd like to thank our employees, they're the ones that helped us achieve that through, as you say, wellness programs, you know, diet programs, taking care of themselves. So it was an effort on the part of our employees.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Are we going back to public?
Yes, we're going back.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you ready? Alex, for the other, okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Infel over here popped his motion out here before I had an opportunity to make a comment concerning the insurance. Aside from what we have to do, and having been involved with it at the sheriff's office, and having worked with that insurance committee for a few years prior to me leaving, there has to be a mandate, in my opinion, to require these insurance companies to be more forthcoming with us and our employees. And the example is, we have a new policy year October first, they wouldn't even allow us to keep punch our folks in until well after the approval or the start of the new premium year. And therefore, we have people, employees, not only in the sheriff's office, but countywide, that could get their scripts filled, they could get their doctor's appointments, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just asking that that be made part of whatever agreement, if it's a negotiation after the RFQ is, decision is made. But we've got to have some mechanism to require these insurance companies to be more helpful to our employees and not put them in a bind between the October first date and whenever they finally allow us to keep punching that in. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the first item under public works is approve the extension of time for their fair improvements to river landing and dead river landing remediation area. Public Works is here to give any detail, but the basic reason is weather. Any questions?
I don't have a question.
Yeah, where is, where is dead river landing? I'm sorry, I don't know.
From eighty-one, south of Red Bay.
Eighty-one, south of Red Bay, okay. Okay, thanks.
More wishes?
Motion to approve?
Second. Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item is request approval of men and women, women's, men, and the hills for construction engineering and the special services for lighting, state road eighty-three for additional ninety days.
Then that is also due mainly to the weather, is that not correct? Motion to approve request?
Second.
I have a question.
I do, too.
If we had ninety days of weather that, during this period of time, caused the delay? All three thirty-one?
Yes, sir. You probably realize that the project's been, it's a DOD project, so typically it's about an eighteen-month project, and that's how many rain days they've had as far as inclement weather. CW Roberts, typically RS and H, they track it on a monthly basis, and any, any days that are over what's called for in the specifications is basically a rain day that is added to the contract. This is just to adjust the CEI contract to coincide with the time extension on the CW contract.
So we're expecting then, by June twenty-fifth of this year, that that foreleading the project will be finished?
Yes, sir.
I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, the next item, is request to abort bid zero thirteen to zero zero four, Seating Gulf Drive Western Broadwalk Amrail retrofit, this is replacing wood with tables.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, the next item, is request here, short presentations of the median equal length from the top three firms for RFQ thirteen to zero zero eight, engineering services for County Road thirty-two eighty, and RFQ thirteen to zero zero six, engineering services for County Road one eighty-three.
Any questions? Any wishes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask that at the time when we hear these, that we get a score sheet that would be more reflective of what we will hear from the presentations?
I'll take care of that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
They usually provide us, we have in the past, with a packet, and I'd like, if we could have that at half-time, I don't know why we didn't have it this time, but, you know, they usually give us a...
I'll take care of that, Commissioner. And would you like that for five of the presentations, Mr. Chairman?
He has the results.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, how would you like these reported back to you? What is the ranking back to this?
I'll tell it to Louis, maybe. In one, two, three, be fine.
One, two?
One, two, three.
One, two, three, last on the top of the score, or per, per mission?
Toes, toes score, we need a toes score.
Moving right on. This is a request for permission for a collection, for a letter of credit for cards and notes. The expiration date, expiration date is April eighth. We'd like to have approval in case they miss that date, if there's a contingency.
Any questions?
Second.
Our motion's second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Morning, Commissioners, Mr. Clerk. The board asks for a kind of an update on the Northwest Florida Commerce Park. It's also known commonly as Mosshead Industrial Park. Probably need to establish, probably in the future, what name we really want to...
Greg, can you, like, speak more into the microphone, maybe?
Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of muffled.
Is that any better?
Can y'all hear out there? Can y'all hear? Yeah, they're shaking their heads, yeah, so.
Okay, I may, may just be mumbling. Anyways, this is, like I said, it's commonly known as Mosshead Industrial Park, or it's been tagged with Northwest Florida Commerce Park at Mossy Head on some of the original This is just a chronology of entitlements that have been obtained over the past, approximately, I guess in about two thousand and two, the county obtained this property from what appears to be like a property exchange that was done. And then, I'm not going to go through this actual list, but this is just some, some key dates of entitlements, and you can kind of see from two thousand and two, the county has been working on, on the development of the industrial park at Mossy Head. This is a location map that just kind of gets you orientated. Most, most folks probably know where this parcel is, but you've got two eighty-five, the property is bisected by State Road two eighty-five. There's approximately fifty acres on the west side and about two hundred and fifty acres on the east side. On the north side is US ninety, on the south side is Interstate ten, and the CSX rail line runs along the property, too, and there's actually a rail spur on the eastern end of the property. So it's, as far as...
Greg, just a quick question. Somebody asked me how far it was from I-ten. How far is it from I-ten access, an access from I-ten?
If you look at the, the map, I-ten is, is a big wide roadway just to the south of the park, so, I mean, we're talking like it abuts Interstate ten.
It does, but, but access, how do you get on Interstate ten from, can you get on?
Yeah, yeah, you, you basically get off at the interchange and then, I wish I had a pointer, but...
So it's right there, it's right?
Yeah, it's right there.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the entitlements that were obtained in the past was actually getting an intersection to access the east and, and west side of the industrial park off two eighty-five. We looked at trying to get access off US nine day also, but if you ever dealt with the CSX on trying to get a new access connection, it's, it's quite challenging. Typically, they want you to give up three accesses. This is back in two thousand and seven, we went to the board and obtained a development order for the, the property, which, which gave the parcel entitlements. The intent behind that was to, to, if a, somebody came in, a big box wanted to come in, or any type of development, there would already be a DO in place, and this would, any type of approval would be handled as a less than minor, so it would be a quick turnaround on the review. This was just a conceptual master plan that was submitted at the time of the DO, showing a lot layout and a conceptual road layout. This is where that concept was, was taken further by Preble Rich, and they've actually gone out and engineered the roads, the storm water. We've obtained a, this is shown an overall grading and drainage plan, and what the zones are, is that's just the watersheds that, that basically drain to the storm water basins. But there's a permit with the Northwest Florida Water Management District for the entire site, so that's another great entitlement, because when a developer comes in, or a big box comes in, they don't have to spend that time going to the water management district to obtain a permit. All they have to do is basically build their building and direct the storm water to the roadside conveyance system. So that's a real time savings and a good selling point. This is a cost estimate that Preble Rich did for, based on their infrastructure improvements, and the total's about one point eight million to build the roads, the storm water, and all the infrastructure that was part of that, the design plans. This is the, a concept drawing that Preble Rich put together, tie, that was part of the CDBG project, and this is where, you can see where the Mosshead School is and the package plant, you got the Dixie RV package plant, where they're being tied together, and also extending water to service the Dixie RV. One of the benefit, indirect benefits of that CDBG project, in addition to providing jobs out there, was it indirectly benefited, I actually provided water and sewer within the industrial park on the way to get the Dixie RV, so it turned out to be a, and also gave the county a start-up operation as far as the wastewater utility. This is a, you've seen this before, this is just a, a budget update on the CDBG, it hasn't changed since the last time we brought this to the board. This is kind of a action plan that I put together, it's, the county's going into a, the wastewater utility business, and there's some action items that we need to work on. One of them would be to, we're gonna need somebody to administer, operate, and maintain this wastewater utility system, and I think we just don't have the expertise in-house for handling that, and I would recommend to the board that, that we would RSP it. We need a rate consultant to establish sewer impact and usage fees. We need to establish the actual franchise service area that we're gonna serve, I'm assuming it would be similar to Mossy Head Waterworks Service Area. Then, once these package plants reach capacity, we're gonna need to immediately begin construct, construction on a regional plant that has been designed, permitted, it's sited at the industrial park, and it's, the plans and specs are on the shelf, we just need to identify funding for, for when that, those, that, those package plants reach capacity. So those are action items with respect to basically becoming a wastewater utility provider. Within the industrial park, got a recommended action plan. For marketing purposes, it'd probably be good to construct signage at the park entrances. You've seen previously the budget for constructing the remaining infrastructure improvements. We probably need to draft, you know, conditions, covenants, and restrictions, which would be filed with the land records and run with the deeds for the lots sold. Recommend that we draft, you know, the Industrial Park Association bylaws, an industrial park management plan, and industrial park maintenance plan. And currently, must have missed a couple of slides, but currently, as far as the CDBG, it's my understanding that the water and sewer has been laid now, and they're just doing the certifications on the water and sewer lines, and they need to do a start-up operation on the lift station, and then that should be up and running very shortly. But I'll be happy to try to answer any questions the board may have.
Greg, I do have one question. You say we need some infrastructure improvements. Do you have an estimate of cost for that?
One point eight million for the actual roadway, storm water ponds, and, and all the improvements that were associated with the Preble Rich infrastructure plans.
And I, I know that the current sewage package, I guess you would call it, is, is doing the school, the, the RV sales, and, and the industrial park. At what point are, do we see that we're going to have to come up with the, the three to five million for, to construct an actual sewage plant? Do we have an estimate of, of what size, or how many people will be in the industrial park that will push us over the edge?
Well, the, the trigger currently is the two package plants together provide forty-three thousand gallons per day of sewer capacity. Our current users, which is Dixie RV, is using about a thousand gallons. They have a hotel that one day they'll bring online, which would probably utilize another three thousand. I think the school would like to get back on the system, and, and they potentially could provide another three, but...
Three a day?
Yeah, three thousand gallons per day, so what would that leave you like?
Seven thousand, thirty?
Yeah, so they eat up forty-three minus that amount.
That's thirty-five thousand gallons.
So, so there is sewer availability, and I, we've already been getting contacted by various folks in the area that are interested in potentially tying into the, the system. The Raceway contacted me recently. You know, one big box could come in there, depending on what the use is, and eat up all that capacity, which would put us into, you know, reaction mode, where we'd have to, you know, immediately identify a funding source and start construction of the, the two hundred and fifty thousand gallon per day plant, but what was I...
How, how, we look up to Dixie RV? How do we charge, what's the rates? I mean, the rates haven't been established, how are we going to do that?
Well, that's why I'm recommending we get a rate consultant involved and, and establish that.
This is gonna be one of the top priorities, to get the rates.
We're actually looking up to them. We're actually looking up to them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple comments. First about the, the rates to charge them. I believe you have an agreement already in place that says until capacity is reached, that they have to con... and they have to construct a new plant, there is no charge to them because we're using the plant on their facility to help initiate this capacity aspect of it. My second comment goes back to my prior position as Finance Director when we worked with the Department of Agriculture to get low-cost financing for it. So there is, there are financing sources available that when we start to build this place, because we're going to be charging at that point in time for sewage rates, that that will be almost self-sufficient. There's other backstopping funding sources that can be used to do that. Along those lines, a quick question. Mr. Graham, are both eastern and western parcels serviced now by water and sewer, pending the certifications? Both eastern and western parcels?
Yes, sir.
And there is...
Well, let me caveat that. The lines come in directly across from where Mosshead, the entrance to the Mosshead School is. Now, to actually service, there's a portion further to the east that there'd have to be an extension of the water and sewer. Is that the property directly to the east?
We'll talk about the west, well, it's on the west side of 285.
Yes, it's serviced.
And there's water and sewer as well.
Yeah, and the majority of the eastern side is serviced too. It's just, you would have to extend it a little bit further to the east if somebody came in all the way down on the east end of the industrial park.
I guess, Mr. Edel, I have a question. I have a concern, I guess. You know, I had other people wanting to hook on, but, you know, do we let other smaller hook on and then when we need the capacity for somebody moving into the park? I'd rather just, you know, I'd rather just not let anybody hook on except for the two that, you know, the school and the RV, and save the capacity for the park.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Commander makes an excellent point, and this is gonna tie into one of the items that I was asking about later on to be on there with regard to economic development. And Mr. Graham pointed out the need for a master plan for the industrial park, which would include issues such as this, which I again will save to my later comments, but these are the kind of things that we need to get a master plan for that. Master plan for the 331 corridor, which my predecessor even asked the staff to look at for development along 331, and again, I'll go into more detail during my timeframe. But I appreciate Mr. Graham bringing up the fact that we do need to have a master plan and it needs to address not only the issues you brought up, those that Commissioner Commander and others that would bring up from a master plan standpoint.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Greg. Greg, first of all, yeah, can we get, can I get a copy of your presentation?
I've got one here.
Okay, it should, it should've been in our book, 'cause I'd like to have looked at it before, the presentation, and...
If you could furnish this all with a copy.
Yeah, that would, that would be good. Mine deals more with marketing. I guess my question is, it seems to me like we need to start, you know, branding the center. I like the name Commerce Park better than I do Mossy Head Industrial Park. I think we need to start branding it and we need to start getting our marketing materials prepared, and this is probably not in your mailing list, but what kind of materials do we have placed at the Department of Economic Opportunity? Do we have any collateral marketing materials? Do we have anything at the chamber? Do we have anything at the commissioners' offices? Do we have anything at the airports? You know, this, if this is our top priority, we need to either get a project manager to run this whole thing, hire or get a marketing person to begin to set the marketing program in place and start going on it, because, you know, I think, this was going on when I was Commissioner before, in 2004, I mean, that, you know. So there's a list of things that have to be done. It seems like there's a lot to be done before we can really get, get going. So I would like to see us continue this discussion with maybe more materials, more mapping materials, and more information on this, and pull together the program, who's gonna do it, and how we're gonna market it, because I think that it's just, you know, we just kinda keep talking about it, but I think we need to take some action.
And I think one of the reasons we probably haven't done any extensive marketing, in fact, is because we did have some, a problem until very recently with getting sewer to the park and couldn't market it if we couldn't, if they couldn't put in, if they were small enough to put in a septic tank, that was one thing. So I think that's what's held us back, but I do agree. I mean, if we have to hire a firm or have somebody on staff, I don't know.
Yeah, and if we're gonna go into the sewer water business, I think, you know, we definitely need to get our community, so whoever, to immediately run us out some financials. I mean...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and again, this is gonna tie into what I hadn't intended later on. I would think it'd be prudent to perhaps hold a workshop, a one-hour workshop before our next meeting, where we can talk about economic development issues to specifically include Mossy Head, 331, and others, and it goes exactly to the things that Commissioner Commander and Commissioner Meadows have just brought up. What do we need to be doing to market this? Where are we marketing? Getting some ideas and getting an idea, what course of action are we going to take and how are we going to do it? What are we going to charge? Are we going to sell the property? Are we gonna lease the property? Want incentives? I would think that if we did a one-hour workshop before the next board meeting at the south end, that we could start to lay the groundwork to get this, get traction on this.
Does that give staff enough time or do we need to, for the next meeting here?
I think we, while it works out, we can talk about what we need.
As Mr. Graham has said, I've been contacted as well as he about other people interested in going in there, and we don't have a thing to tell them right now about, we wanna sell you acreage? We want to. Lease you acreage? At what prices? What kind of incentives do we wanna get? So I would think that the sooner would be the better, but I'm certainly willing to go with whatever the board wishes.
The sooner is better. I think, I mean, we can talk, I don't even have a map. When people ask me where it is, I don't even have a map to flip out and show them. I mean, I just go, it's, you know, it's up there in Mossy Head. So, you know, it's, we're very lax on what we've done here, but I think we should go ahead and have a workshop immediately so we can get going on these things. I would like to see someone with development experience, maybe a developer that we hire to, and I mean, this is the kind of thing they do every day, and get a developer to, hire a developer, have him be the project manager and developer of this and run with it and report back to us on what they've got. But anyway, that's...
We also might want to pull the EDA through the EDC, the EDC original, and then the EDA manages the park there in Freeport and...
Obviously get them involved, yeah.
Well, let's pull there, let's look and see how their covenants and restrictions and all that sort of thing, just, you know, see if we wanted to mirror, do something different, whatever.
Members of the board, Chairman just asked me to take that for action. I have your comments, and I'll be talking to each of you individually. We'll put together a workshop or special meeting where we discuss this. We'll have more materials for you and a clear presentation where we're at in the meetings.
Don't we need a motion to hold a workshop?
What I like, what I was talking, this type of, is about having a special meeting. It may take more than an hour. You know, we spent probably 30, 40 minutes now. It may take an hour to go through all this.
We'll start at 2:00 on the night?
The night is gonna be a...
Yeah, I mean, I...
That's our next meeting.
Let's just have a special meeting and just set them to a certain time.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, then I would move that we have the county administrator determine when to have this meeting through his consultations go forward as quickly as possible.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Alford.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have the tallies for the proposals. Number one was Preble Ridge. Number two, Genesis. Number three, X.
Do we need a motion to negotiate? So move to negotiate with the top firm?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, just so we don't have to come back, if negotiation with the top firm fails, why don't you go ahead and motion a second, negotiate with the second?
I will amend my motion to save the...
Just make it a separate motion.
Right. If, my motion is if the top firm fails, then go to the second, which was Genesis.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay. One, two, three. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the administration agenda is a request to appoint a member to the Economic Development Alliance. I'll give you that for discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Who's on it, who's on it now? Are you, you getting off?
There's a vacancy.
The county?
There's, there's a vacancy and it could be a chairman and, I mean, it could be another board member. Greg Selig was only proposed.
Oh, okay.
Commissioners Clay Adams, Attorney for the Long County Economic Development Alliance. Chairman Bridge is correct. The county has two seats by bylaws on the EDA. One is the chairman of the board or is designated from this board. The other is the byzantine, meaning the county administrator, the tourist development council's executive director, or another board member from this board. Now, I'll defer to the current county attorney, Mr. Davis, but prior county attorneys have always cautioned against having two board members on the same board because this is a direct support organization from the county where you do provide funding and potential sunshine issues. So that's been that, but we have a new county attorney. I'll certainly defer to him on that.
I would raise a second caution.
As the fact...
I'm just wondering how it was structured. I didn't, I thought maybe Kenneth was going off, but, okay, that's fine.
So we'll defer that to you, but we simply need you to take by motion an appointment from one of those three categories. The EDA board, I believe Mr. Haffield was there and I know Mr. Demir is there, the board would request that the BCC, if they do make the decision to appoint, they appoint someone who's actually here as opposed to someone who is not going to be in that position, such as the TDC director, who we don't know. We need an actual appointment. We've had an issue with getting quorums and having meetings. We're in the process of hiring executive director, and while Mr. Demir is fielding very gamely as acting county administrator, interim county administrator, we need somebody on the board, so we greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we would like to look into, Mr. Haffold?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Oops. Thank you, Commissioners. My last item is request for Sulu Florida Voting Improvement Grant to construct a boat ramp on Shoal River off High Note Road. We have done preliminary engineering of this possibly feasible, and I believe there's some discussion that's gonna ensue from this.
Anybody?
I asked Mr. Haffold to look into it, and I appreciate that. We have a piece of property adjacent to the original Shoal River there, and while it's a narrowing and finding boat ramp, there's no other rivers in District 3 that have a boat ramp, but I've had requests from various residents to see if we can get something in there, and this would be an opportunity if we get the grant from Florida Voting Improvement to construct it. We've got the money available for the necessary engineering right now, but if it doesn't go forward with the grant from them, then we'll just, we'll table it.
So how to?
No, it's right on High Note Road at the Shoal River.
Is there a matching that the county would have to put?
Previously in the past, there's been not a match on FBI P grants.
I'll second your mo, did you make that as a motion, sir?
I'll make the motion now.
I will second. I just will, in my limited experience with boat ramps, let me suggest that somehow we find parking, one of the things that I'm finding that we're having problems with throughout the county is that they can launch their boat, but when they come back out, they have nowhere to park the boat and the trailer.
This, this is not going to be a big boat launch area. It's gonna be a small one, but there, in the preliminary engineering designs, there are a number of parking places set forth on the county property.
I seconded the motion. Ms. Nowers, what's your name? Mr. President? I was telling you. He's kinda, he's a little, he's hard to miss, you know. Can't see you back there.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to add one thing to you. The FBI P grant, it used to be a slam dunk. Every one we turned in, we used to get. Two years ago, that changed drastically. They are very, very competitive. Example, we turned in Chalktall Beach last year to FBI P. We had all the DEP permits in hand, all the RV Corps permits in hand, and plans completely done, and we didn't rank high enough to get the grant. So if you're gonna go after the Shoal River, which would be a fantastic project, you might wanna try to get the survey and the permit application submitted before April 4th, because they give tremendous points for those two things, and I don't know if that would be, I don't know if that would be possible, but I can just tell you, if we didn't, if we didn't have a chance with all those permits in hand, it's gonna be real hard.
And we, we applied again, you know, this year.
Not trying to discourage you by any means, I'm just telling you...
Just get to work, Bill.
You've just put the pressure on Mrs. Quimby.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and apply and start working on that.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioners, I was asked to look into our seat on the Northwest Florida Beach International Airport Authority. I ended up having to have a letter from the attorney for the authority, and I had taken a look at the 2000 dash 274, which is the law of Florida that set up the board and the airport authority, actually it was amended portion of the bill. It was amended in 2010. The amendment effectively allows Walton County to appoint a member to the board. Once appointed, that member serves, and the only way that member can be removed would be through an act of the governor's office. So our current member would serve the current term through 2014, I believe it is, and then you would have the authority under this 2010 dash 274 to appoint, successful, or reappoint in whichever direction you choose to go. So I just wanted to give that information.
I just have a question about that. Are we on the board because we gave money to, I have sent to Southwest Airlines? Is that, is that part of, does anybody remember how that appointment got made and what was going on?
Yeah, originally, we had two seats. I believe I forget who it was known, and Dewey Wilson, and then there was some jockeying around with Bay County, and so we dropped one seat, but I think it was a way of, I guess, you know, being nice to us, being, we did give money to the airlines, yeah.
It appears that when this was done in 2010, one seat was given to Citi, and one seat was given to Walton County.
Oh, to Walton County, okay. Okay.
The second item, Commissioners, we have a request from the Warren Law Firm to hold an executive session on April 9th at 3:00 PM to discuss the Avalon Dunes versus Walton County and Benezi Development Case, 2012 CA dash 744, and I would need a motion to have that meeting. Sub Luke.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mims?
Yes. Y'all were, y'all were absent last time. Two members were absent, and we had a presentation by the neighborhood of Gulf Trace, and they have made application for NERTA funds to the $400,000 to basically restore some of the dunes that were taken away by, by the storms, and to restore some of the turtle habitat. And they, they came to us and asked us, and I believe there might be some people in the audience that, yeah, there they are, that are here representing them, they came to us and asked us if we would, the chairman would write a letter of support on this project from, from the BCC, and I will turn it over to, is that Mr. Harrell? Mr. Harrell, yeah, he can answer any questions y'all have, but we decided to defer it to this meeting, so, because, you know, we had two, two members absent, so...
I'll start off by questioning, is anybody from the TDC here today, they sell? I guess I have a question. Is this part, you know, the TDC and we're, and we're getting money from the federal government and all to, to restore the beaches, is this part of that restoration project? Okay.
No, that's actually beach nourishment, and this is, this is restoration of dunes, so it's totally two different things. From what, from what I understand, you're not laying, you're not laying sand out into the water extending the beaches, you're really basically building dunes and habitat.
Good morning, Commissioners. My audio vision is a little more primitive. My name is Richard Harrell. I'm a resident of Walton County and with my life for 21 years in Gulf Trace. It's generally known that the rise in deep water oil spill on April 20th, spilling 228 gallons of oil in the Gulf did a lot of damage, and the damage was represented in Gulf Trace by a number of things. And the damage was represented in Gulf Trace by a number of things, among which we had a lot of people from BP patrolling our small beach, up to 20 people, trucks and laboratories, feeding centers, and so forth and so on, which did a lot of damage to the beach, which you can see by the pictures. Subsequent storm surge brought in by the summer storms blew away a lot of the beach, and we have to have that restored. We also had in front of the beach, in front of the homes, a small dune which meant to encourage nesting by the turtle, sea turtles, which were destroyed. By the way, as Commissioner Mills said, we are not here to ask for any public funds or Walton County money. We're here simply to ask for your endorsement of our claim. We lost a lot of rent. Probably the total real estate valuation of Gulf Trace is over $100 million, even a small amount percentage reduction. You can see the damage done there. We lost a summer of children, grandchildren, and residents of Gulf Trace because of BP monopolizing the beach. For a while, they had 10 patrolers in Seaside, and Seaside shoot them away. So, they came down to Gulf Trace with their trucks and their laboratories and their reading centers and their tools and so forth, and did a lot of damage. Gulf Trace is an NP, Neighborhood Plan community that knew ours, and is very sensitive to the sea turtle. And over the past year or so, 256 different lights fronting on the beach were replaced, so they're sea turtle friendly. And the next month of the 17th, representatives of the Sea Turtle Conservatory in Oaklusa, Department of Environmental Protection are making an official presentation to Gulf Trace as a sea turtle friendly sanctuary. One of the communities on a very short list in the state of Florida. And I think Walton County can be, can't be proud of that also. Sea turtles coming out of the water, instead of seeing man-made structures, will be able to see the actual dunes, friendly dunes. And we're working with a lot of, some of the people, Martin Miller, the Environmental Protection Agency, and other people to make sure we have the right say. We've given a lot of thought to that. And we've given a lot of thought to the building of the dunes. We've met with the Department of Environmental Protection a number of times. We have permit, which is in the book, which we have approved to do whatever we have to do. So, if we've done, we've failed everything that's right, and we just need your endorsement to say that it's legal, it's valid, as a step forward for Walton County. It's not, it's not relevant to our particular thing, but I'm sure some of you have seen articles in the newspaper which penalize the county. I'm saying, you're not, didn't you see this?
No, I did not. You lost count, I'm sorry.
This is, that was in recent newspaper article that says, "We're not taking advantage of the BP money."
We all said that we have submitted a lot of projects from there as well, and we have, we have actually done some permitting on some of those projects, particularly the artificial reef project, we've done some permitting on. From what we understand, it's, there's a board that's pointed by each governor of each state for these NERTA funds, and that they're moving very, very slow. And so, you know, that's one of the things we're going to be talking about in the future is the NERTA funds and how to proactively go after those. But as of today, you know, yeah, as of today, it's all stopped up in this one committee, and it's the five states, seven states.
BP, they're jockeying because BP wants more credit.
Right.
You see, for, let's say, for a million dollar project, they want, let's say, 10 points, and justice only wants to give them five points. So, that's where all this jockeying is going on.
Yeah, there's still a lot of legal maneuvering going on, so.
I have a question. Did you file a claim with BP?
Yes, we had a claim. Been in there about two months now.
And what's been the result?
We, as far as we're concerned, the people we've talked to said it looks good, it looks valid. They did say, though, that the claim is stronger if it has the endorsement of the county commissioners.
So, I guess, are we looking for, to go for a NERTA claim or against BP directly?
NERTA. It's on the NERTA list. It's on the NERTA list.
On the NERTA list, which is a different government program.
I think your question, Mr. Enfield, was-
Did you file a claim directly against BP?
Yeah, for damages.
Yes, for damages. Deep Water Horizon Oil Spill Restoration Project.
So, there's two different things. There's a file against them for damages for, you know, for damage money. And then there's, and then there's a project, there's a program called NERTA, which y'all are on the list, because I saw it, with this project, that you apply for funds from them to restore and et cetera. But the damages is a whole different thing. Did y'all file for damages?
Yeah.
No.
No.
I understand that it's two partitions. The first one is lack of revenue. Renters would have it, businesses would lose revenue, sales and so forth, damage. The second part is loss of use, of enjoyment, of valuations, and so forth.
And if you are in a certain zone, the coastal zone, say, Matt's out now, you can file even if you did not have damages. You're a single-family residence on the Gulf, you can file. But this is, this is not damages. This is NERTA, because I looked into it. And, you know, and we're on the list too, and so is everybody else. There's a, you know, packet about that big of everybody who's submitted for NERTA.
Forgive me, but I mean, based upon what your presentation chart is showing us, it looks like it's a damage claim, not necessarily NERTA. I mean, I understand you can go to NERTA too, and it can be on the list. But, I mean, my question is, why wouldn't you make a direct claim against BP for damages? When you talk about rents lost, property values depressed, income down, erosion, you've got tracks on the beach that apparently were caused. That sounds like damages to me in addition to the concept of it being a project.
Is there a third category for both?
Not really. No, there's forms for every kind of claim that they have.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Richard Feldman. I'm also a homeowner in Gulf Trace. This is actually a BP claim. It's not a NERTA claim.
It's on the NERTA list.
It may be on the NERTA list, but this, we actually do have a claim filed with BP or against BP.
Okay, thank you.
What DEP has told us, and basically for us to move forward, one of the major steps that they say we need is to just simply get a letter of endorsement from the county. And that gives our claims some strength.
Did they indicate, I'm sorry, did they indicate to you that by getting the letter of support from us, that they was going to move your project from wherever it is now up the ladder?
All they said was, in order for to simply move forward, one of the things they were looking for was a letter of endorsement from the county.
Which, I guess a question-
This is the NERTA, this is the NERTA $400,000 project that you've submitted to NERTA.
No, I don't believe it. I think this is against BP.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Davis a question? Would, I'm not aware of this board having previously given a letter of recommendation on a private individual's claim.
No, I'm not.
It's not really an individual claim. This is a neighborhood.
Well, the only thing about that is, if it is a NERTA claim, I mean, any money that comes to Walton County, whether it's to Gulf Trace or, you know, wherever, is a positive for the county. You know, so, I mean, you know, the fact that these guys have kind of gone out and done all this work, gotten the permit and everything. To me, I think, you know, that the board should back up any private application that does, you know, what we all want to do and brings money into the county, because obviously $400,000 is going to be spent back into the local economy. And as long as they follow our, you know, rules on white sand and how they unload and load, then, you know, I think that we ought to encourage this type of thing. But, yeah, you know, it is on the NERTA list. So, if there is a claim being filed, you should have claim application forms. Do you have those? Okay, well, can we, can we see those? Because, let's see, okay, you've got, okay, you've got.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen any of these forms. We missed the last meeting. But I'm still confused. Is this the private claim or is this the NERTA claim?
The W-24 is a NERTA form.
Well, and the private people can make NERTA claims.
Understanding. But I mean, I thought you just said we were, this was for the damage claim and not the NERTA. And I would have lack of comfort in supporting a private claim.
The W-4 form is a NERTA claim, so it-
I understand. I just, I got a comment from the petitioner on this.
Yeah, let me clarify this. I'm reading this here, and it is a NERTA claim.
Yeah, it is.
This should be a damage form.
Because I looked, I looked into it. Well, they can file a damage claim if they wanted to, and all the individuals can file it in. But this is a homeowners association group getting together and filing a NERTA claim.
But my understanding is other homeowner associations have gotten together and filed damage claims directly to BP, and have been paid.
Yeah, I don't think they're precluded from doing this.
Just for clarification, it is possible for a homeowners association to file, to file a damages claim and NERTA claim. Obviously, it's not seeking relief for the same kind of damages, for lack of a better way of putting it. But it is possible now. I'm with Commissioner Enfield. I would be a little hesitant to endorse a private claim for damages under the BP claims process. NERTA, I think, is a whole different ballgame. I don't, I think they actually are looking for the county government to say, you know, this project would not be a problem for the county government.
I stand corrected on my earlier statement, Mr.-
Now, my question goes back. You didn't file a damage claim against BP?
Didn't we?
Just NERTA. And the question then goes, why aren't you filing a damage claim against BP?
Well, our claim says against the deep water well spill, so I-
Well, you know, they, because maybe they don't know about it, or maybe they don't want to go together as a homeowners association, maybe they want to file claims individually. Because the claims are really for rental properties and businesses law, so that they might not have a damage claim for the whole homeowners association. Do you see what I mean?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mills, in looking at what they've put before us, I see a damage claim there, and I know that, as you said, they can still file against BP. It seems to me that they have, from what I'm hearing, and I haven't seen this document that you've got there, a damage claim may be a NERTA claim as well, but they certainly, but they haven't taken advantage, from what I'm hearing, to file a damage claim directly against BP. And from what I've heard about other homeowners associations that have done so, they have been paid. So, my question is-
They have not paid?
They have been paid. So, my question is, why, why don't you?
I don't think our association was aware of the fact that we could as an association, because most of the claims that have been filed in the last three years have been either individual homeowners and businesses, not as, not-
Like, you probably filed one for-
I filed one for, yeah, obviously.
And people with rent properties probably filed one for rent. But this is for a specific project. If you file claims for losses, of course, obviously, you get money, and then that takes up your losses. But this is for an actual project, that they're going to go out and do something on their beach.
Why don't we do this mission with your permission, obviously? Let me sit down with the other gentleman and go through their claims, and let's make sure that what we're endorsing, if we are going to endorse something that's truly a NERTA claim versus a private claim, as Commissioner Enfield has said. And then I'll, we'll bring them back to you guys in some sort of organized fashion, actually, what the claim is, whether it should be a BP claims process claim or whether it should be a NERTA claim. And I don't mind sitting down and talking to them, so long as they're seeking the county's authority.
Well, and two, I think, you know, they have DEP out there. They have a DEP permit. Obviously, DEP thinks it's a NERTA claim and has kind of bought off on the fact that it's a NERTA claim, so.
I have strong suspicions that it's exactly the right claim.
So, I'm fine with that. I just, I just hope that we can get these gentlemen some kind of an answer before, you know.
If then, I can make a recommendation to them. I'd be able to-
Okay, okay, that would be great. Thank you. And maybe, do you want the materials?
Yes, Commissioner, I would appreciate a copy of whatever this-
Yeah, one of you needs all the materials as well. We got last time.
Mr. Chair, we have the material distributed.
And let's-
We have the materials, sir. We did, we did.
But you didn't, got you. You have the copy too?
Well, we did have copies, but then they were absent and-
They were.
Second. Are we ready for my second?
Yes.
Okay. Florida Regional Tollway Act. This is, I hope that you've got the materials in your book. There's a Senate Bill 1132 that's titled Florida Regional Tollway Authority Act. Basically, what it does is it takes away the Mid Bay authority and combines everything into a, some other kind of-
Regional.
Regional, thank you. Regional authority. And so, Mid Bay Bridge authority is opposing the Senate bill. They have adopted a resolution, which is in 2013-2007. And they wanted, they're asking us, to the delegation and the county commissioners in the adjacent counties, to oppose Section 26 of the Senate bill and seeking amendment to strike it from the bill. So, they're basically asking us to support them in going against a regional authority. And they sent the materials to me, and we distributed them out. So, I'm not necessarily speaking, you know, for them. I am just told that I would bring this to the board today. The regional director could not be here, but they did send this material, and they did ask that we, you know, vote to support them. So, I'll throw that out to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do we, is anybody from Walton County on the Mid Bay Bridge Authority? And you are?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Lois Hoyt. I live in Walton County, and I serve on the Mid Bay Bridge Authority as treasurer of the authority. I moved to Walton County recently, so that's why I'm still on the authority. Most of the members are in, or all of the other members are in Okaloosa County. We ask for your consideration of our resolution because we believe that considering Walton's history of opposition to tolling, you might have concerns about this. It creates a Walton, Okaloosa, and Bay County tolling authority. The Mid Bay Bridge would lose its authority, and it would become part of this other authority. We believe, and we've been working with Okaloosa County commissioners, they were not consulted in this. We understand Walton County commissioners were not consulted in this. And so, we have concerns. Why was this bill even created? And so, we would-
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah, that it would actually create a regional tolling facility.
As I, I have a question for you. Please don't go away. As I read the proposed legislation, is- As I read the proposed legislation, is that there would be three counties, which would be Okaloosa, Walton, and Bay, that would also have the county commissions involved in approving these things, approving the projects, which would mean that on a regional basis now, on a regional basis for those three counties, we'd have an option, an option to utilize that authority to do improvements over a three-county area. But without this, it's solely for Okaloosa County? And only in the Mid Bay Bridge area?
Well, the Mid Bay Bridge is not really, the Mid Bay Bridge Authority is not Okaloosa County-run. It is independent. We make our own decisions. We have our own control. What this would do is create a new authority, which is not really accountable to the commission. It's accountable to the Department of Transportation. So your county gets to appoint three members of the toll authority, but it is not, it does not run the authority.
Just, and that goes back to, just because we would, if we were to say this legislation passed, that we would have members on, doesn't mean that we would necessarily turn around and vote for a toll in Walton, in Okaloosa, or in Bay County. But somewhere down the road, if that was needed, it would be available to the combination of those three counties, as opposed to just the Mid Bay Bridge Authority. Is that correct?
There's two parts to this legislation. One is creation of regional tollway authorities. The other, if you look at line 2416 of the legislation, it creates specifically another authority, which it will be created because the Mid Bay Bridge Authority is going to be part of that authority. So while the regional authority creation is optional, you know, depending on the approval of the counties, this one specifically is created. If this legislation passes, you will have a Okaloosa, and they call it Okaloosa Bay Authority, you will have that. It says, "Is hereby created and established a body politic incorporated, an agency of the state, to be known as Okaloosa Bay Regional Tollway Authority."
Would Walton County have any kind of representation of this?
Yes, you have one member. You get to appoint one member.
We currently have no members now on any of these.
Well, let me make a comment on that. We know what it's like on the TPO. You don't have them in, we don't have any kind of majority vote. We always get, you know, voted out. So this, to me, would be another way of the state to gobble up everybody, get control. And we got one member on it, so what? You know, as long as, as long as it's in somebody else's hand, we have one vote, we get nothing, as they say.
Let's get over to the state office, please. Fair enough, what's going on?
Okay, do you know what the status is of this bill?
We'll have to get the attorney looking to the state board.
Do you know what the status of the bill is of this town?
It's been approved, it was introduced by Brandon, the chairman of the transportation committee, approved, it was approved by that committee. It was referred to four committees. So it's been approved by two of the four. It has not been introduced in the House yet.
So it's a committee, and is there any chance it might pop out and be voted on within the next two weeks?
Anything's possible, but we also have, if the House does not use this language, and it's not been in the House bill yet, we still have conference, so there is some time.
My understanding is it's not been, because it's not been a companion House bill filed. So if it comes out of committee on the Senate side, the full Senate would have to vote and then refer it to the House side, and that would not make place in two weeks.
Okay, so that would be, so we would have time to...
Well, Councilman, on page 65 of this particular bill, it says a county or two, a county or two or more continuous counties may, after the approval of the legislature, form this regional tollway authority. It says "may," it doesn't say "shall."
But there's two different tollways. There's two different parts to this. One is the regional tollway. And then, further on in the bill, it creates a specific tollway authority called the Okaloosa Bay Tollway Authority. There's different parts to the, to the language. The "may" is not so much a concern.
But if it says...
But the part that says "shall" is the concern.
So basically, they're trying to create these regional toll authorities over all the state. And the Okaloosa would just be one of those particular toll authorities, Okaloosa Bay?
But it's a "shall."
It's a "shall."
Yeah, that's a non-optional. There's two of them that are "shells," you know, that will be created with enactment of the legislation. One is the Okaloosa-Walton Bay. The other is the Scambian-Santa Rosa.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't want to hang around on the "may," because, as we know, "may" is turned into "shall" pretty quickly when it comes to state dictating, you know.
It looks like there's another one, Sun Coast Regional Tollway.
Right, that's the Scambian...
That's a "shall." No, that's...
Somebody Google.
Citrus Maryam, Olatchua.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're concerned that it is a way for the state to come up with creative means to come up with a way to compensate for funding shortfalls.
Toll effort. From what I understand, in Orange County, the building, I think, that State Laney High Force, they actually have a lane, and you can pay more money now if you want to get in that lane, and you go faster. So it's all coming down to how much money do you want to pay, and how fast do you want to go, how fast do you want to get there. So it's headed that way, and I think this is probably part of that structure to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next side of my hat is Boys and Girls Club, it's called Boys and Girls Club of South Walton, I believe, of the Emerald Coast, I'm sorry, is almost complete. It's right west of the Coastal Branch Library, and it is a facility that is going to be a bonus to our community. And we've had a visit from the executive director, Ms. Jessica Juris. Is she here today? Yes, she's here. And I'd like her to come up. She has, she has offered us to discuss the idea of us using these facilities when they are not using them, which would be, they only use them after school and during the summer. So that means weekends, nights, and other times, we could, we could use the facility. So the point of this, come on up, Jessica. The point of this was to bring this to you, to see if you were interested in perhaps entering into some talks with Boys and Girls Club about using the facilities. And if you want to say something about that, that'd be great.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I ask you to excuse my casual attire. I'm spending the day getting ready for a rodeo in Freeport in the lovely Walton County, which will be next weekend. So after this, I'll be knee-dirt in bull riding mud, something, I'm not sure what I have to do. But we are nearing completion. We're supposed to open our facility in July. We're really excited about it. It's been in the, in the works for quite some time in South Walton County. And we have interlocal agreements with other counties, cities, and government organizations. We typically call memorandums of understanding or memorandums of agreement, whereby we agree with the county or city to enter into an agreement where county residents would be able to potentially use the facility and/or the sports fields. We have three NCAA-sized soccer fields, two NCAA-sized basketball courts. And we have plans for a pool, an outdoor basketball facility, and potentially tennis courts. We also, the facility as it stands right now, Phase One, it's nearing completion, is 28,000 square feet. We will be adding another 10,000 square feet in Phase Two if we find a need for that. We're currently looking for, potentially looking for partners to enter into that Phase Two. So we kind of brought it today just to talk to you, get it on your radar, like, you know that we do have a recreational facility going up. And like Commissioner Meadows said, we don't necessarily use it in the evenings, on the weekends, and, you know, during other times of the year. We vacate some of our facilities sometimes for large festivals, meetings, conferences, things like that. So if you have any questions, I'd certainly be glad to entertain, answer what I can.
Any questions?
So you can actually play basketball down there?
Or soccer, or baseball.
Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion. You know, we have a contract for a recreational director for the county for activities. I would suggest, since it's the budget cycle currently in progress before scrubs, that we should get together with, I can't think of his name right now. Shane Supple. Shane Supple, to discuss this, and he could include in his budget request for the year for scrub consideration what might or might not be available to pursue for the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. The first on my multiple list is Morrison Springs. If you remember, we discussed earlier whether or not we could charge a fee at Morrison Springs. Actually found a letter back in 2004, a restorante bill from Mr. Mark Martin with Bureau of Land Administration. And it is possible that we can charge a fee for using Morrison Springs. I would like to suggest that perhaps we hold a workshop or a lengther discussion on what we want Morrison Springs to be. For those who are not aware, right now, in the summer, it is inundated, especially on the weekends, with absolutely hundreds of people. They're like ants on an anthill. A lot of devastation is going on. Bathrooms are destroyed, garbage is everywhere. We have to pay overtime on the weekends to have our, our facilities' maintenance crews go out and clean up on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays because it's, and the Sheriff's Department has to put on extra personnel just to control things there. So I'd like for us to perhaps hold a workshop and look at either charging. We might consider having a fixed base, I don't know what you'd call it, person there. A lot of people who go there to scuba dive, now, they used to have a dive shop there when my commissioner's aide used to own it and run it. They, of course, sold air. Now there's no one there, so, so people, you know, when they, when their tanks run out, they have no way of filling them. We might look at, you know, letting someone perhaps sell air and that sort of thing for taking care of the facilities for us. I mean, we have a lot of options, but I'd like to suggest perhaps we hold a workshop and talk about, I know we can't get anything probably in place for this year, but we do need to look, because it's costing us money to, you know, for this facility. It's really costing us to replace the bathrooms, to replace stuff that's being destroyed during the summer.
And Commissioners, I have had some contact with BEP. Obviously, the only thing legally we'll need to do is whatever you decide you want to do. We would have to submit an amended management plan to BEP for their approval. So once you decide what you want to do, we'll draft the management plan and then send it up there and wait on approval or seek their approval.
Could this report properly lead someone to manage and run for us?
Apparently, it can be subleased, yes.
That's a good opportunity for us to look at.
And by the way, I had a phone call yesterday morning from the lady from BEP, and we played tag late yesterday afternoon, so I have not spoken with her. She had a call yesterday, so they know where this lawsuit is.
Do we perhaps hold, do you think a workshop's a good idea, or what? Really?
I thought it was.
Okay.
It's occasionally rolling. Me and they are temporary, maybe we'll do... Twenty-nine, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, I'll be here. I know what the night is filling up. Do you want to try to do it before our next meeting here? I mean, that's a month away, but...
Well, I mean, you mentioned, there's no way we're probably going to get to implement it before the summer season starts anyway, so.
Yeah, there's no way.
But there's time. It's time to...
Maybe our next, which is April what, maybe?
Twenty-third.
April twenty-third up here? I'll make that one.
After four.
Which is, you know, you want it before or after?
After what?
If we do it on the twenty-third up here, you want it after, don't you, Cindy? Or you want it before at eight o'clock?
It does. It does. I do.
Yeah.
I'm on the road at 5:00 a.m. I like the bike.
Like a truck.
Yeah, yeah.
So y'all decide and set it up then, okay? Let me see, my next item is, oh, there. Roadways, roadway activities. It has been called to my attention, and I'm sure to Commissioner Meadows' attention, that allowing roadblocks during spring break is probably a bad idea. There are thousands of folks down there as it is, and then, when we do roadblocks on 30A, it causes a great deal of problems. You have in front of you the roadway activities, you know, where we spell out how they can go about, they go to admin and they get a permit. I would like, it does have, it does say, I believe, no vending on holidays, but I would actually like to add for spring break, for holiday weekends, I think we should make it the weekend, let's be more specific, rather than just like, say, Sunday would be Easter. It needs to be Easter weekend.
Right.
And, and other peak times, which would include spring break. I really think it causes a lot of traffic hazards on 30A.
And I think this, this time, a group was out there collecting in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And we got all kinds of calls and such, and I agree, it should be probably, probably, you know, busy weekends, and they're supposed to have a permit, but I guess these folks did not.
And also, they should only have, to me, a permit for one location, because I know in the past, they've gotten them, so, let's say, I'm with, I'm with whatever, you know, Susie's scouts, and I'm collecting at this point, and then you go two blocks down.
Right.
And they're doing the same thing, so they hit you twice, so it shouldn't be just for one location.
I agree, I agree. And, and of course, they want the busiest intersection, so they're out at 395 to 30A, middle of the road, very dangerous.
Yeah, so if perhaps...
Yeah, I agree.
You could make those changes.
Yes, ma'am. General, general, start returning.
Just a little time. Bring it back, please.
My next, Mary Neilsen, I talked about this before to Sarah and to Cindy, probably, and to all of you. But while you're making those changes, would you look consistently at the documentation of the applicant, and that there's proof of who this applicant is and the agency, and it's not just a plain scribbled signature on the form? Because when I looked at that form on your attachment for this meeting, there was just a name. So we should have who the agency is, where they are, are they incorporated in the state of Florida, are they under SunBiz? I mean, do a little background work so that we know who we're dealing with. And we're not dealing from someplace in Crestview, who's at 30A and 393, and none of the money, according to that policy, is coming back into Walton County necessarily. So I would like to see more documentation on the application and it followed up in research so that it's not just a scribbled name. Thank you.
So you're saying it should be a Walton County nonprofit or agency?
Yeah, and I mean, you could look all these people up on SunBiz with just a couple of clicks.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's not just...
It should be a Walton County agency.
Agency. And I think there just should be some more guidelines that maybe you all could come up with. And so if you're going to tweak it and fix it, do it all at the same time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All righty then. If you remember, I passed out at one of our last meetings, this RSTOR Act funding guidelines for local projects. I guess, let me, let me back up, I'm going to take it out of order. We need to, we did not fill the city position on, the last time, we had left that blank. We had a, an application from Elizabeth Brannan, who's with the city of Freeport, and we had an application from Matt Work from the city of Dufunia. He's had to withdraw because he's now running for mayor. But I would like, then, there's not going to be a commissioner on the committee. I'd like to suggest that perhaps we appoint Elizabeth Brannan from Freeport and ask Dufunia to appoint somebody. That way, we'd have one from each one of the cities on the committee, on the RSTOR committee.
So right now, we have nine people, correct?
And that would make eleven.
So we'd have to get two more. But the, the problem is that we did not solicit, officially solicit, you know, their applications like we did everybody else. And, I mean, I think, you know, she may be fine, but I think that we, we didn't, did we officially ask them to submit? officially ask them to submit, I mean, who?
Yes, I think, Mr. Mayor's left the room, but I'm pretty sure we did, yeah.
Yes, the cities and the county to submit their names?
Yeah, it was on the list, yeah.
They hadn't responded, they hadn't responded at the time that we did the.
No, we didn't have their thing in the packet. Who, yeah, we just, we didn't have it in the packet, that's what I'm saying, is that there was nothing in the packet, so that was my question, is who are we considering, and are we just kind of.
Well, Elizabeth Brannan is a councilwoman of the city of Freeport.
Oh, I know that, but, you know, I think we should follow the same guidelines that we did.
They didn't submit applications. You know, the city doesn't, they didn't submit applications.
Did they submit a letter of interest or anything?
Yes, they, yeah. Ms. Brannan, then, I think Mr. Work did, but we had to pull his, because he just married recently.
Were they the only two?
The advertisement went out and enlisted the different categories. One of those was a city representative.
Yeah.
We had not received any applicants early on in that process. We did get an email from Mr. Work and from Ms. Brannan that they would be willing to serve on that.
After the deadline enclose, was that, what happened?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, are you comfortable with how it sits right now?
Up with the board, how it sits right now? Yeah, because there's no commissioner on it, and, you know, I'm fine with, yeah, I'm fine with the way it is now.
I'm comfortable.
Nine members and, no commissioner, no elected, no elected officials on it. Yeah, that's a motion.
Motion to maintain status quo.
The nine member as it is, yeah.
I second the motion.
Now, motion sent, all of you, please.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion curious.
Oh, that's me. I have written a letter to Chairman, I will pass y'all a copy out, Mr. Chairman. I will, well, I won't read it, I'll let y'all read it, I'll just sum it up. In all the consortium meetings that I have been in, and all the other meetings and reading and everything, I spend a great deal of my time on the Restore Act. It has been pointed out numerous times that projects that are going to be considered for pot two and pot three, which I also have copies of y'all to better understand what the pots are, they're going to look more favorably at counties and entities that join together. For example, Escambia County and Santa Rosa County have joined together on a number of projects, and they're putting together their plan to work together. Commissioner Parasot, who is on the consortium from Ocalusa County, had suggested to someone that, and then suggested, came to me, that Ocalusa and Walton join together because we share the Choctawatchee Basin. The sediment and the storm water and all that comes from North Ocalusa, North Walton County, it comes down the Choctawatchee River, it's impeding the Choctawatchee River, it gets into the bay, and it eventually gets into the Gulf. So I have had one meeting with representatives, not including Commissioner Parasot, he was not there, I want to make that clear, with public works from Ocalusa County and Walton County, and we're trying to identify some projects that perhaps we could work on together, such as stormwater projects, the living reef projects, something like that, we can combine together and make our proposal as we go forth and request money from the council as well as the consortium, to perhaps, you know, make our requests stronger. So I'm asking the Chairman and y'all if y'all will let me go ahead and continue my efforts here to see if we can join together and perhaps bring you some projects that we feel like that we can join together and be stronger, and perhaps get money. We have, we have a number of, for example, dusty roads, I call them dusty roads throughout the county, including South Walton, that are contributing to sediment in the river, in the bayous and all, that hopefully that we could join together and get more money that way, so.
Commissioner, may I ask questions, please? As I was reading one of your sentences there, "I plan to continue holding meetings if the commission has no objection until we have identified mutual benefit projects," et cetera, et cetera. Am I wrong in thinking that we are just policymakers? We are not to be out here driving a boat, so to speak, that's why we got Mr. Haffill over here, that if we have something that is important, and obviously Restore Act is, that we direct our staff to do it, or look into it, or do whatever it takes, instead of us getting in there and driving around and meeting all over the world with everybody? I just throw it out.
Mr. Haffill was invited to the last meeting, he could not be there, and certainly, I would expect him whenever possible to be there.
One of my questions would be, okay, you talked about local pot two and consortium pot three. I definitely agree with pot three, the consortium, that we need to work with either Bay County on whatever projects would be, you know, we could actually work with two or three counties or Ocalusa solely, but I'm not quite sure that, you know, Ocalusa is the, you know, is the right county to work with, it may be, we may want to work with three counties, or we may want to work with, blah, 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 that kind of thing. So, you know, I would like to get some more information on that. In other words, we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket.
Actually, I invited Bay County, but they didn't want to participate at that time. We do share, is Billy McKee still here? Billy, will you come, we do share so much of the watershed with Ocalusa County.
Right, and that's the kind of thing that I think needs to be brought before the board before we decide that we're going to work with, you know, one county or, you know, one, and that's an important project, but I think the local pot two, am I?
That's the council pot.
That's the council pot, so you're really only talking, you're really only talking about the consortium pot.
We're talking about consortium, but council, pot two is the council pot that goes to the five states and all, and some of these projects, because that is mainly environmental, that pot is mainly.
And pot one is the local council, is our pot, okay. Okay, so one, so two and three.
We certainly could submit projects like this to the council pot.
I think, I think the, I think this is just such a much bigger issue that, you know, we may want to workshop this as well, because I, you know, this is a huge issue, and, you know, I was going to bring this up, I think, at another meeting, but I'm of the mind that I think we need to hire a consultant, whether it's a lobbyist, an attorney, a consultant, or a mental firm, or whatever, to go out there and bring back the information for us.
Mental firm?
And part of, yeah, a mental firm, someone with, yeah, environmental, yeah, sorry about that. And to go out there and actually, you know, seek out what's out there, come back, tell us what's going on, tell us, tell us what's going on with this, tell us what's going on with that, and then run interference for us on all these projects, and bring back the information to us, and then let us decide how we want to do it. I just, I just think with the restore thing that you're doing, Sarah, and the other things, I think this is an awful lot to just take on with one person.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Members of the board, one of the things I have on my list is to meet with the county administrators from adjacent counties, and I welcome the board's participation, and have the, make sure at administrator level, we're supporting what the committees and the meetings are doing, and I'm going to use the term, form a power block, so we can jointly apply for things or coordinate things, and I thank Commissioner Commander for taking the time and running with it, and I wasn't available for the first meeting, but I will be. So I'm going to be meeting about four counties in the next thirty days, administrator level, to give it to cooperation and see if we can become a driving force.
We are, you know, we're losing ground every day. I mean, you know, I keep bringing this up, and, you know, perhaps I'm wrong, I felt it was part of my responsibility, y'all appointed me to, y'all didn't, but the other board appointed me to the Restore Act, and it's imperative that we get ready when that money comes down. Oceanic, the money may come down in the next three or four months from that award. We don't know about BP yet, but, you know, we can sit here and play around until everybody else's, you know, projects are in the pot except ours. We need to get this committee going, and I think as soon as perhaps Mark can meet with committee and give them sunshine, you know, we continue to.
I agree. I think, I think one of the things legislature is looking at doing as well is, you know, putting the money in a trust fund and then doling it out to, you know, to people. So I think the pot of money that's really, the one that's actually, you know, we know is going to happen, is the Nerdapot, and I think the restore, the restore is important, but I think the Nerdapot, we've kind of, we need to talk about that too, but I agree, and that's why I think we need to get someone who is not encumbered by a lot of other things out there solely working on this, and maybe it's Mr. Haffill, and maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, a technical firm that has worked with this before, I don't know, but.
We have that position that you're.
Right, and if I may, meeting at the administrative level, we're not coming by the sunshine law, that'll touch, and we can bring things to the elected bodies and organize and what have you, but.
Yeah, because you're really actually not supposed to be talking to Sarah, any of the members of the other restore.
And I certainly realize that, that's why Mr. Parasot was not in the meeting.
Right.
He was not there.
Okay, but y'all both feel strongly about identifying points, so.
I had been, I had been told through a third party that he felt strongly, we should join together, you know. That doesn't say we're voting on any particular project, but, you know, as I say, we can sit here and do it all by our little selves.
Third party, third party communication between the two is also sunshine law violation, from what I understand, so I think it's, you know, I think, I'm just not ready to make this kind of.
I will certainly back up, tear it up, cancel the meeting, and we'll just stop where we are, end of discussion.
I think Mr. Haffill has a good starting point to talk for him with the other county administrators, and then come back and tell us what his beliefs would be, a proper course of action, and perhaps it would be what Commissioner Commander suggests, or what Commissioner Meadows suggests, either way, but I'd like to afford him the opportunity to see, is there that interest in forming that coalition to go on? Because if there isn't, and I realize that you've got one commissioner from another county saying it, if there isn't, then we need to know that too. So I'd like to give the county administrator the opportunity to go forward, meet expeditiously if possible, and report back to the board.
Yeah, and he's out of the sunshine, so he can, you know, he can, I agree. Do we need a motion to that? No, just direct.
I'm through. I'm through, that enough.
Mr. Chairman, my second item has already been taken care of with the result of holding a special meeting with regards to economic development and developing the master plans we were talking about earlier, so I'm happy with that. I just wanted to give a brief update from the trip that, Mr. Chairman, you and I took to Washington under the fly-in, and I know we had meetings with a number of executives from the Department of Defense, including a couple generals, a couple admirals, a couple under secretaries of the Air Force that spoke to us, meetings with Congressman Miller, Congressman Sutherland, Congressman Thornberry from Texas, and Senator Nelson, and we have a concern for the impacts on our region, on our county, with regards to sequestration and the impacts it can have economically on not only the county governments and the city governments, but also on the people. There is a consensus among the Senate and the House, even though they don't talk to each other, that there needs to be the ability to alleviate some of the problems that are caused by sequestration, which we're forcing them to take away from operations and maintenance monies, and there is currently legislation pending that's going to help the Department of Defense do just that, just hasn't passed yet. From what I gathered out of the meeting, of all of the bases in North Florida, the one that will be least impacted will be Eglin. It doesn't say they won't be impacted, but least impacted, and I know that the legislation that's pending right now would seem to alleviate the furlough issue for their employees, there still would be some impact on defense contractors, but I know that there is a new appreciation, at least on my part, of the expanse of the mission, not only at Eglin, but in the Gulf directly off of our shore, that certainly the highest levels of government are aware of, and I think will take into consideration when it goes on. There was a lot of talk about, is there going to be another base realignment, and we got from both Senate and the House side, there is no desire for either one in the current year or in the upcoming two years to do another base realignment. One of the things they talked about is the fact that none of the savings that they were supposed to achieve from the previous base realignment have yet occurred. They're still on the negative side of that, so there's no concern for that right now, but we did express our concerns to the Senator, we expressed our concerns to the Congressman, we expressed our concerns to the executives from the Department of Defense about what will happen to Panhandle, to get our support behind what needs to be done to try and keep the impacts minimal, to keep our security of the country strong, and also to keep the economic gains that we've made over the past couple of years in place and be minimally impacted by whatever action has happened. Again, the only disconnect I saw was that for all of the problems, one side wanted to blame the other, whether it was Democrats blaming Republicans or the Senate blaming the House, and we told them we just want to get it done so that there's communication and minimization of impact to all of our defense people, but in particular here in Walton County. Mr. Chairman, did you have anything that you would want to add to that?
No.
Thank you.
Y'all didn't get snowed in or anything?
No, had good weather. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things. One, major observation this morning, and we may be working on it, Louis, we've got to do something about these screens. You can't see them from here, and I'm sure the audience has just the same issue, and I think we've talked about it before, button up something. If you can, I'll ask the Minister to see if he can report back as to where we are on that particular issue of the upgrade. We can hear things, we can see things from here. I know Ms. Meadows had some issues hearing here, and I couldn't hear you either, so.
I will tell you that we did have a vendor meeting as far as sound and that issue goes, so we're going to get a speaker and that kind of stuff put up here. Now, we did not look at visual options. We can't see if there's a way to maybe, you know, put screens in different areas and where these projector shoots of, you know, publicly see it. We're looking at pool purchasing, at, you know, something like having a courthouse where we actually have televisions as opposed to these data systems that drop down, that'd be a whole nother vendor meeting, which we'd be happy to try and arrange, if that's something that you'd like to look at, or just have a video service come in, give options of what we potentially could do.
I'd like for options to be presented, okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
The only other thing I have is, is Ms. Mann still here?
Yes, sir.
She must be out in the hallway. But anyway, I understand there's been about forty-five applications for the TDC director. Ms. Dawn's last day is April the ninth, we're here at the twenty-fifth of, or twenty-sixth of March, and we know it's going to take a period of time to vet through those applications, and also have the opportunity for the board to look at and interview the top selectees. So I guess this is a two-part statement. One, I think Ms. Meadows wished to have ten applicants, ten finalists.
I thought that was a good number.
I'm just suggesting maybe an alternate number, five, let the committee vet it down to five, or interviewed by the board. And the second thing is, due to the fact that we're looking at about ten or twelve days before Dawn leaves, that we make the decision to put an interim director in there up until the time the new selectee is made, and then with that in mind, I would motion that Mr. Ramirez be the interim director for TDC up until the time that the new director is hired.
Commissioner, I'm a little concerned, from a legal standpoint, I understand what you're trying to do.
From a legal standpoint, I understand we're trying to do this in a timely, I'm a little concerned we don't have that agenda and notice that we're gonna take an action. Now, the way I understand it, the county administrator has the ability to move somebody without permission to action or change their duties for a period of time. But for you to appoint an interim county administrator, I think you're gonna have to have at least some notice that that's going to be done.
Okay, and we'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I would be a little bit.
But where do we send Mr. Davis as far as asking the county administrator, under our present structure, as a TDC, as a direct report? Now, we would be in essence overstepping.
Well, that's true. I have to get that. That's right. He does supervise the TDC. But I'm a little concerned about just making that appointment without any, anything on the agenda saying you were going to do that or.
Yeah, there was nothing to know. Nothing.
I was sort of about taking that action without an agenda.
I have a question or comment on that. We decided that, you know, there are forty-five applicants, and I've seen all the applications. There's a large field of very qualified people. I think we would be remiss if we just looked at five. I think that, you know, we need to stick with the ten if you wanna interview some more than others, you know, that's fine. I think that, you know, it's your prerogative, but I think that this is a very important position, and I think that people have made a lot of efforts to apply from all over the country. And that, you know, ten is really, because you know, a couple will probably drop out or a couple probably won't be able to come. So I think the more, the better. It just spreads the net further and wider to looking for the right person. And that's the thing on the number of applicants. And the thing on the interim, I think that Ms. McGinnis has, she's meeting with the people, I think, on April the first, and they're gonna pick the top ten for interviews. I mean, we conceivably have someone in that spot by April fifteenth, I think, or by the second meeting in April. So I'm not sure that we actually need a, I'm not sure that, I think Mr. Haffill can go down there and touch base with them until, you know, the new person comes in. But I just, I don't think we ought to do that, move somebody down there, get that whole thing going, and then move somebody else in. I think we ought to, that would be my opinion.
If you're talking about him or Gary, I don't think, you know, he couldn't go sometimes.
Well, yeah.
But I understand, and I concur with most of what Commissioner Meadows, I'm concerned about the current organization structure, is that neither Mr. Haffill nor Mr. Demers are currently under that thing. Now, we would need, I would think, to give them special direction by the board to go do that, which could be done at the April ninth meeting, if that's the situation. So I think, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that we defer till April ninth to see where we stand.
That wouldn't be necessary down until April ten.
Right.
What I would suggest is just agenda, what Commissioner Haffill just suggested, is that the board would give Mr. Haffill the authority to either appoint an interim or to act as the interim until such time as the new TDC director is appointed.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Mann McGinnis, who is HR manager, for the record. With regard to the first thing, I'm sorry, I stepped out of the room. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you stepped out of the room right at the.
Right at the wrong moment. Now I know why Louis came outside and was looking for me. With regard to those ten applicants that the review committee will submit to you, your review committee is not privy to seeing race, gender, veterans information. So if they do not select minimally qualified diversity candidates or veterans, qualified veterans from the state of Florida, I may actually strongly recommend to them that they add an additional few people to that ten unless they are willing to take some of them off to keep it just at a ten. We are supposed to meet on the first, we are supposed to identify at least those ten, and then I need to go back to HR and make sure there aren't any other opportunities to be out of compliance with that. That was really all that I.
And then the questions to the interview process.
Well, that would be at your direction. The review committee is willing to provide me with their, I'll tally them all up, we're gonna meet on the first. I will identify, again, diversity of veterans candidates. And then it was my intention to report to you on the ninth, who those candidates were, and get your direction about when you wanted to do interviews. I also hope to bring back to you some management leadership-type questions for your consideration as you do your interviews, and possibly two or three different ways that you could score them, and hopefully bring those to you ahead of time so that you would have some planning efforts about how the board as a whole would want to vote on the next executive director.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
One thing I would consider, we had, we're gonna have a workshop on, in this check, there was five hundred thousand dollars that's in the cover just thought to be, just go back into the coffers. You know, we're gonna need money to get these projects and these things moved and sold. You know, I might just consider using some of these funds to move these projects if we're gonna have to.
Mr. Chairman, I think, and now that you've got budget process started, I think this would be a great time, but when the budget scrubs are completed, the recommendation come back to the board as to how it should be utilized. But I would also caution that it shouldn't be just, it should be used for one-time expenditures, not as a recurring expenditure, because we're only gonna get once.
That's what I'm saying.
But I would.
And this, the letter just fell, Senator, anyway, talks about, you know, getting behind the eight ball. We need to be proactive. If we're gonna have projects for me, we need to have all the things, document everything ready to go for these projects to be approved. It's gonna be a challenge, and I agree with Commissioner Meadows. It's gonna be a challenge to get somebody getting these things moving.
When they have to use it for some of that too?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
As we do the budget scrubs, they can come back with a consolidated recommendation as to how best to use it.
Once these funds, if we utilize these funds and we get the project approved, this money could, this money would be referred to being a project, so it would be put back in the budget. So.
Thank you.
So you said, you said that, like, five hundred thousand was already in covered.
Yeah, they said the previous budget. I think they figured that previous budget.
They had anticipated getting back five hundred thousand. It came back much higher than what they anticipated it would be.
Got it.
Okay, yeah, got it. Okay, thanks.
I don't have anything else. Any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm JV. J. V. Hillard, resident community act. A few minutes ago, we had a discussion on the Restore Act. I should have gotten up and said a few things then. I was hoping somebody else would. But I want to say just a few words about the Restore Act and the committee we have here in Walton County. I've done a lot of reading about what other counties are doing. I have a concern here in Walton County of what we're not doing. The committee has been formed. I've heard of no announced meeting of that committee to get going. Other counties have their committees in place. They are already functioning. They have already adopted rules and procedures on how they're going to operate. As far as I know, we haven't done anything here in Walton County. And some of the commissioners here today, they campaigned on leadership. They're sitting in the chairs, and I think we need to see the leadership to get this committee going. I agree with Commissioner Commander, based on what I've been reading coming out of Tallahassee, out of the Senate and the House, that they are going to, at the state level, and let's make no mistake about it, they have the carrot and the stick. The leadership in the Senate and the leadership in the House. They're going to look at people, or counties rather, who are cooperative and are progressive and have got their act together. I like the idea of a regional approach. I think you got to talk to your adjoining counties. Mr. Haffill is going to do that with his counterparts. But on the political side, I'm not sure how that works on the sunshine and so forth, but as Mr. Haffill pointed out, he's not restricted on sunshine in dealing with his counterparts. So I would like to see, at the next county commissioner meeting, that you people task that committee to get going and to form their policies, whether that's gonna be done within the commissioners or by the committee, and then come back to you for approval or whatever. Several counties here along the coast have already done that. And I think it's time that if we're gonna show leadership, and we're gonna step out front in Walton County for the best interest of this county, that we need to see something coming out of this body here. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to say, first of all, Pat Blackshear, Blackshear Planning, and I'm here officially representing the Seaside Town Council regarding.
The what council?
The Seaside Town Council.
Oh, okay.
And our interest is in the Restore Act funds, and that what we would ask certainly is that you provide all the information that you can through your public information officer from the standpoint of funds availability guidelines, the policies that this committee is going to work under, et cetera. And from a training that I attended, it was for continuing aid credits for professional planners, but there was discussion in a presentation about the Restore Acts. And it's my understanding, because I asked that specific question for my water management district days, is can some of the funds be used for land acquisition? And it is my understanding that the, some of the funds can be used for land acquisition. And I think that, you know, my suggestion to you is that you look carefully at gaining input on some of the areas that needs to be purchased that would better protect our coastal dune system. Commissioner Meadows, I have one particular area in mind that I'll contact you on that's in your district. But again, you know, my purpose is to follow this for the Seaside Town Council. They may at some point in time decide that we would like to apply for some of the funds, but no decisions are made. We're just trying to be on a fact-finding mission today and make sure that we're involved. So I've given my information to your public information officer, and Mr. Haffill, welcome. And I look forward to working with you and your public information officer on gaining that information. Thank you, Commissioner Mander, for bringing that up today, so.
Yeah, I think we definitely need, we definitely need to get Louis on board about hosting a lot of these, you know, well, it's gonna be a lot of information that's gonna come out.
I need a page, and I did have my hand up. I don't think you could see me back when we were talking about the Restore Act. But I want to second what JV said about a sense of urgency about both NERTA and the Restore Act. And I also want to also support the concept of, under both NERTA and the Restore Act, and that is looking at more coalitions on what are termed big picture projects. And one of those, because that is, that is, both at NERTA and the Restore Act and the meetings that I've been to, I mean, they are looking to get the biggest bang for the buck, and they are looking at regional solutions as much as possible, up to anything to do with the Gulf of Mexico in particular, obviously, you have to take a regional approach, or anything to do with something like Choctawatchi Bay and West Bay over in Bay County, you have to take a regional approach. And to that end, I just want to give you just an update on just some things that are going on. I mean, I went over to a series of meetings in Bay County, for example. There was a coalition formed there, and it was headed by, I think, I believe she was a biologist at the university there. And they have already identified in East Bay and West Bay over there, for example, the areas where they want to address stormwater issues and sediment issues and so forth. And they've been working on that, and they've already done their report on that. Tomorrow, the Nature Conservancy is sponsoring a meeting in our area for Choctawatchi Bay. It's gonna be a three-hour meeting, predominantly focusing on, you know, scientific issues in Choctawatchi Bay. And we know we have stormwater issues, for example, that will need addressing at some point. It's on our NERTA, it's on one of the county's NERTA projects, is stormwater issues in Choctawatchi Bay. So there are, there's a lot going on right now in other areas where they're getting down to the details, because ultimately, it is the details that are gonna move the project forwards. And where natural partnerships form, like on Choctawatchi Bay, for example, to me, we need to get our committee activated, meeting with their equivalent committee, Bay, this group in Bay County as well, because what happens in West Bay can impact Choctawatchi Bay, because, you know, the intercoastal, the currents, you know, everything's connected. And so I just want to really reinforce what he said about somewhat of a sense of urgency at getting this, getting this going. And I understand that, I just talked to Billy, and for whatever reason, apparently, I'm not sure Walton County got the message about the meeting tomorrow, so I'm gonna send that information to him. I know DEP will be there, for example. I'm gonna send that information to him. And from here on out, I mean, I will absolutely make sure that anything I get is passed on to the county environmental people.
I'm not sure that we've tasked HR on following that kind of thing.
I think we have with NERTA. Now, I may stand corrected, but I believe, I believe that the previous board asked Billy to.
Okay, okay.
To stay in the NERTA.
Okay, good, good.
Well, I did bring the information with me, because I didn't, I'm going to it, but I was gonna look at my calendar.
The Nature Conservancy?
If the TNC's doing it, right. It's three hours from nine to twelve. I can't remember off my head. I can't remember.
Information in my office.
I will. As soon as I get home, I will forward the invitation.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I just have three short things as a bonus to get you guys involved. A couple of things that go on. One, Mr. Haffill's, Compteur's office has identified a number of contracts that just frankly don't exist for things that we've been paying worth correcting that. We should have, they'll be coming to you in various stages, so hopefully we'll have this in the next couple of months and thank him and his office for taking the time to check behind me and the commission. So we should have that cleaned up. Most of it is things like some past tasking for attorneys and that sort of thing. We'll have that cleaned up here fairly shortly. Of course, every time I use somebody outside of my office, I'm going to have a contract for you, like I did a couple of weeks ago. Secondly, there is a chance that I'm going to be contracting with an HR attorney just to, for me to ask some questions, to not have that contract with you, for you, if I choose to do that at the next board meeting. And thirdly, just want to take a moment and thank you and the staff. I have been calling on them and Mr. Haffill's folks more than once a day, and they have been nothing but cooperative. These folks have worked very hard to get me caught up on a lot of issues. And so I just want to let you know how hard they have worked and been cooperative, been cooperative with me and my office, especially the three folks in my office of your little services who've been inundated by me. And I just want to take a moment and thank them and thank you guys for your help.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? This time we go into planning and development services?
Can we take a short break?
Okay. Mark, and I see you.
I don't get work yourself either.